So, welcome to tonight's meeting. As many of you know, we've been working on the town plan for about two years. We hope to have a draft to the Select Board by the end of October. We've had a couple dozen, small to large-sized gatherings, as well as many meetings of the Town Plan Advisory Group, as well as devoting our regular Planning Commission meetings to the town plan. We've heard from hundreds of people. There will be several more choices in the next few -- or chances in the next few months for people to come and discuss aspects of the plan. So, thanks for your commitment. I appreciate everybody being here. I know we're all in this for the same thing, which is to make Brattleboro a better place to live. So, thank you for coming. The stated purpose of tonight's meeting is the one that the Planning Commission was charged with by the Select Board. That is, that the Planning Commission hold a public meeting and invite all town committees to discuss the issue of sustainability related to the town plan. We wanted to create a forum tonight for the -- so that the town committee members and the public can see how sustainability is being addressed in the town plan process. And also, we want to take this opportunity to gather ideas and suggestions from those present, all of us here tonight, on ways to incorporate more actions consistent with sustainability values. During this meeting, I'd like to emphasize these ground rules for participation. One, I guess, would be speak up. But respectful listening and respectful speaking, and respect that everyone's time is limited. Please speak to the topic and be as brief as you can. The parts of tonight's meeting are right there on the board, but first part is a discussion of sustainability, which will be facilitated by Ralph Maima. Ralph's a PhD. He's the Director of Marlboro College MBA Program, Managing for Sustainability. He's a long-term member of the BTU group in town. He's a new Energy Committee Member, and he's on the PACE Subcommittee. He's lived in town for eight years with his family. So, I gave you that a little prematurely, because there's a couple other things I want to say, but that's about Ralph. And next, after Ralph's discussion leading, will be a report from some of the town boards, committees, and commissions on their efforts and discussions of sustainability, which will also be around 15 minutes, which is about what Ralph's presentation will be. And then a short discussion by Rod Francis, Planning Director, putting the town plan into context. He's going to speak a little bit about state statutes and so forth. And then the last and the longest portion of tonight's meeting will be a four-station exercise where everybody will get a chance to comment on initiatives and actions which have been written into the chapter drafts so far, and an opportunity to add your own suggestions to the chapters. Four stations are development and conservation, municipal operations and transportation, community development and housing, and energy. So, without any further ado, let's get started. I'd like to introduce Ralph Maima.
Hi. It's great to see everybody here tonight, and I have the home turf advantage in the sense that I get to stand here quite a bit and do this. So, I know that -- I have to keep my voice up fairly high, but if I speak clearly, everybody in the back should be able to hear me. As Gary said, I work here in the Graduate Center. I'm the Director of the MBA Program in Managing for Sustainability, and I've been doing that for almost -- I'll be coming up on five years this fall. And as a result, I get to sort of swim in the murky waters of sustainability all the time, because that's the purpose of our program and what our students are looking for. But it could mean many different things. And in what I'm going to review with you, I'm not going to really get too hung up on specific definitions or specific, you know, orthodoxies around what sustainability is or what it isn't. One thing I will say is that most of my work involves looking at sustainability in terms of companies and -- or the corporate, the organizational world. So, it takes us and our courses and our students and so forth usually off into areas that have to do with things like reporting, sustainability reporting, or auditing, or management systems, corporate social responsibility, and that kind of thing. So, this has been sort of an interesting excursion for me to focus on a town and a community in the sustainability context as opposed to, you know, corporate sustainability or business sustainability. Anyway, I've got some slides here, and I'm just going to really hit this thing, let's see, to advance it. So, these are some introductory thoughts about sustainability. I collected a bunch of different terms that you see or have seen about, you know, basically what it is that can somehow preserve the vitality and the quality of life or the economic strength of a town. And I even included some that are really, really out of date here, like, for example, I put the sunbelt here, just because for a lot of people, 25 or 30 years ago, the sunbelt connoted jobs, opportunity, gentle winters, growth, modern infrastructure as opposed to old, rusting, decaying infrastructure, you know, a positive vision of life in towns and cities. But then there are a lot of things that are much more recent. We're all familiar with the notion of transition towns. There's this movement of, you know, slow money, slow food, slow cities. You hear resilience talked about a lot in relation to towns and communities, local self-reliance, the new urbanism. If any of you read things by James Kunstler, he's referring to it quite a bit, about walkable, human-scale, survivable, robust cityscapes. And I wanted to mention a couple of others here that I thought were sort of interesting. One was the strong towns movement, I guess it is. I don't know really how widespread it is, but I came across a website based in Minnesota promoting strong towns. Very, very interesting, because when you actually read the text about what strong towns are all about, it sounds to me like sustainability. The word sustainability is not even in the entire website. And I thought that there was some interesting inclusiveness expressed by using non-inflammatory language, language that's neither clearly left nor right. But I recommend that you visit it, because it's an interesting site. And then the other one, degrowth. There's going to be a big conference up in Montreal in May of 2012, I guess, called the Degrowth Conference, which they apparently have borrowed from the French conversation about des coûts sens, you know, shrinking cities. And the reason I wanted to put all these up here is that, you know, we don't have time now to delve into the language and the ideas and so forth of each one of these. They're all sort of broadly under the umbrella of this definition from the Brooklyn Commission, commissioned by the United Nations, which produced a report in 1987, which has become a very standard definition of sustainable development, basically meeting the needs of the present without undermining the ability to meet the needs of future generations. But, you know, that can mean many different things. So, I recommend that as we pursue this conversation, that as you have time, you take a look at some of these other expressions of what sustainability might be at a local level. Now, I found this in I Brattleboro, I saw Chris here, in the Brattleboro, I Brattleboro Brattleboro Brain Trust, if anyone hasn't seen this. This is, these are excerpts from the approximately 100-year-old Brattleboro Town Creed. And it's much longer than this, but I just pulled out some words: better, money, patronizing home enterprises, beautiful, cleaner, brighter. This is one of my favorite ones. The strength and power of the town's manhood. And the glory of her womanhood. The future for the children, call to service, faith, optimistic, enthusiastic, bigger, better, busier, and more beautiful. You know, 100 years ago, people were thinking similar thoughts, and they had other kinds of sustainability issues that were just as wrenching, if not more, in their time, like how to deal with a lot of coal smoke over the railroad and the gas works here, and how to deal with the fact that a lot of wool production had left Vermont and gone to New Zealand and so forth. So, you know, they had their own sustainability issues, and yet they were also working on positive, action-oriented expressions of what sustainability might be. So, that kind of leads us to one question, which is, is this just the same old thing all over again? Are these, you know, sort of well-worn nostrums or timeless virtues that any, that every community has always been confronted with, or are we dealing with something potentially relative to the town plan in this particular case that's different? And I would argue that the differences here, well, anyway, let's just take a step back. Why live in a city or a town as opposed to going it alone? It's through cooperative use of resources and mutual or joint assurance of access to water, food, shelter, economic activity, security, anything from, you know, physical security to your security as you age, health, culture, recreation, education, pride, spiritual attainment, a future. I mean, there are many things that give people an incentive to live together in concentrations and to work together. Now, relative to the Brattleboro Creed of 100 years ago, I really do want to highlight, as I go through this presentation, two things that are different. One is climate change, and the other is what I call energy descent. And I'm not going to take the time now to define that, but I really want to impress upon everyone the importance of understanding what that means. Now, that incorporates fossil fuel scarcity, potential fossil fuel scarcity, but it also incorporates rising costs in energy terms of pulling out each additional unit of energy from its source. So, I'll leave it at that. But, you know, 100 years ago, climate change and energy scarcity, or energy descent in this sense, were not the kinds of issues people were dealing with around here. Their sustainability consisted of other challenges. So, with climate change and energy descent as credible threats, and all of these different benefits of living together in a town potentially challenged, through what sorts of mechanisms or through what sorts of specific challenges are these big trends going to manifest themselves? And I just started making a list. Legal conflicts over land, or licensing, or ownership, or whatever, rising costs, rising resource costs, particularly water, electricity, fossil fuels, crime maybe, scarcity of things, in other words, cost and scarcity are slightly different, capital shortages. How many people here are thinking to themselves, "Well, I would retrofit my house if I had that extra $15,000"? I'm putting my hand right up. I'm looking forward to PACE. Migration of people, bad weather, adverse investment decisions, adverse relative to the community, supply interruptions, political uncertainty. You know, with these kinds of mega-trends, we can never, we can never with full confidence say that something that's happening today is a result of something like that, which is really a much, much bigger wheel turning in our world. But we can find lots of pretty graphic examples of all of those things today. You just have to turn on NPR, or open a magazine, or go to a news website. And it's not the lefty sites either. It's CNN and Fox and so forth. So, you know, we might even look at our world today as a kind of dress rehearsal, or tech rehearsal maybe, for some of these bigger things, if indeed they are worth considering. But there's so much uncertainty about both the macro-energy picture and the macro-climate picture. There is so much uncertainty. We have no idea whether the future will hold mild change, severity, or sort of invisible hand phenomena that reverse trends in unpredictable directions. So, there's enormous unsecurity. And, you know, it's, even though this is used as a kind of slur, they are both theories. And it's only, only after a very long period of time, you know, literally centuries, will science be able to pretty accurately describe whether each of those trends is as it has been currently described and have the data to back it up. But they both bear close study. Now, going to the town plan, much more will be said about this, but the thing I wanted to emphasize here is that a town plan can legitimize a vision, a vision of the future and of what's possible, through objectives, policies, and programs. And I'd like to talk about no-regrets policies and no-regrets programs as one way of dealing with uncertainty. And most of you are familiar with this language, but I just wanted to include this so that it becomes part of our conversation about sustainability. No-regrets policies, you know, are the kinds of things where you can set goals that involve investing in knowledge, investing in capacity, building reserves and buffers and banks, weaning dependencies that there's a consensus are really not good dependencies, and measurement of progress and reporting out are essential components of all of this. Before I give you a few examples of no-regrets policies, I just wanted to throw in a couple of interesting things that have to do with taking action for the future in the face of huge uncertainty. One, for example, is that if you have a, if you can reduce some sort of consumption of something by 2% a year, even though you're dealing with a shrinking base, after 15 years, you're down, you've achieved a 26% reduction, just an example. You know, small measures consistently taken can lead to very large effects over the long run, especially if it's something that's not regrettable. You know, you're never going to say, you know, "Oh darn, we should never have reduced our use of fossil fuels, because look how cheap they are." You're still 26% better off. What happens to the, this is another thing just to throw in, what happened to the U.S. Civil Defense Program? And I looked this up, because I remember, you know, when I was a kid, there were civil defense stores and stocks of materials for communities in case there were, in that case, nuclear threats. But, you know, I wondered, whatever happened to that? And was, did the United States government, was ever a debate about, "We never should have spent money on all of those, you know, tins of powdered milk and so forth"? Was there any ever, was it ever regretted? Or did it just sort of quietly disappear as federal policy shifted from civil defense to emergency management, as in FEMA and Homeland Security, which is what the policy shift has been? But it was probably not regrettable and might even be used again. Another thing to mention is that, is that there were famines in relatively developed countries only two generations ago. And so, we need to keep recent history in perspective when we define whether or not a particular measure is regrettable or not regrettable. I mean, I have distant relatives, my grandparents' generation, who were eating tulip bulbs during World War II, because that's the only food they could get access to. So, there's a whole history in the background as well that we need to bear in mind when we define whether something's potentially regrettable or not. And finally, this is just one I threw in as well. I can't, I couldn't find the source, but I remember hearing this a year or two ago. Somebody said, somebody was asked, "How long would it take Vermont to become food, basically self-reliant in food in the case of an emergency?" And the answer was, "Given the existence of seed and knowledge and tools and so forth, and greenhouses, given the existence of certain facilities which aren't particularly expensive to accumulate, one year, basically, one growing season." Now, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a great diet, but there would certainly be some sort of ability to respond, you know, with a relatively limited investment in resources. So, I'm just going to finish up here with some bullets of what I thought might be no-regrets policies versus regrets policies, and then I'm done. These are the kinds of things that can be invested in gradually, and which, you know, even in the absence of catastrophic changes in the weather or catastrophic changes in the energy economy, you don't really mind having invested in them if it's done at a reasonable rate. And that includes investments in energy efficiency, which have great ROIs, long-term reduction in fossil fuel use, smart growth and avoiding sprawl, distributed generation of electricity, use of the smart grid, broadband and cellular network capacity, soil conservation and improvement, local food production, processing, and marketing, economic diversification of the economy. That's never a bad thing to try to aim for. Education, health, obesity reduction, addiction reduction, all the things that basically improve the ability of a populace to deal with adversity, particularly if it's unexpected. Bus and rail transit, walking, biking, environmental protection, the arts, the Brattleboro and Vermont brands. So, that's a long list of things. And as you go down them, you think, "Well, if there were only money to pay for all of those things, they're great." I mean, what's not to like about that list? So, I was trying to think about what regrets policies might be. And they tended to rely, they tended to be about over-reliance on one thing when the future's very uncertain. So, focusing on individual large employers to, you know, define the prosperity of the town in the long term, focusing on individual growth sectors, over-focusing on individual energy sources, investing in the fossil fuel economy when we know that its days are numbered, although how numbered they are, we never quite know for sure. Stasis and denial. And I added denial after I read Tim Stevenson's piece in This Morning's Reform. So, that's it for me, and thank you very much. I, thank you. I think I'll just turn it right over to Gary, because we can, any sort of questions we can deal with later. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph. So, the next section of this meeting is a report from some of the town groups that have been, in many cases, working with the Planning Commission on the town plan. The first person I'd like to introduce is Paul Cameron, who is the Office of Brattleboro Climate Protection in town, and does a great job at that, and also is, oh, you're the head of the committee, the Energy Committee?
No, I work with it.
Works with the Energy Committee in town. I just would like you to comment on some of the things that you guys have been pursuing. Please.
Thanks, Gary. Good evening, everyone. What I'd like to do is just give you a brief history and background on what the town has done over the past decade to reduce energy use and carbon emissions. The town joined the Cities for Climate Protection Campaign in 2002. That campaign is an international network of over 1,000 cities and towns working to reduce carbon emissions, and it's sponsored by a nonprofit group called ICLI, Local Governments for Sustainability. And in 2002, the Select Board passed a resolution committing to making a plan to reduce carbon emissions. The town, since 2002, has provided space for the Climate Program Coordinator in the Planning Services Department. Each year, the town meeting votes on appropriation for the Climate Program, which is now called Brattleboro Climate Protection, and they have approved the request every year but one. So, there's been some really solid support there. Also, in 2002, BCP, or Brattleboro Climate Protection, completed a greenhouse gas inventory that provided information on energy consumption and carbon emissions in Brattleboro for the year 2000. In 2009, the inventory was updated using data from 2008, and the data shows that between 2000 and 2008, Brattleboro reduced its overall energy use by 16% and its carbon emissions by 14%. In 2003, VCP prepared a climate action plan that was approved by the Select Board. I have a copy of it here. It's also available on the town's website. That plan set a target of a 10% reduction in carbon emissions below 2000 levels by 2010, and as I stated earlier, this goal was achieved, and the plan will be revised and updated this year, and new targets set. In 2009, we successfully advocated for the formation of a town energy committee, and there's several members of that committee here tonight, which was recently expanded to 10 members. And I work closely with that committee to complete projects. And just to mention a few of the projects that we've worked on, in the area of energy efficiency, the town completed in 2008, an energy efficiency performance contract with Honeywell in 15 municipal and school buildings for lighting and heating upgrades and weatherization. We've sponsored and organized workshops for homeowners and businesses and landlords on energy efficiency. We've provided free home energy assessments for homeowners and also businesses. We support weatherization projects in homes and businesses through financing mechanisms such as Properties says Clean Energy, or PACE, which is one of the projects that the Energy Committee is currently working on. In the area of renewables, we've sponsored solar hot water workshops for homeowners. We're investigating the possibility of solar electric arrays on municipal property. We're establishing a renewable energy gallery on the town's website, and we're supporting Brattleboro Thermal Utility and its mission to promote biomass for heat and electrical production. In the area of transportation, we organized a no-idling campaign. We've organized a business transportation roundtable to promote transportation alternatives through campaigns such as the Way to Go commuter challenge. The Energy Committee is promoting energy education in local schools through programs such as the Vermont Energy Education Program. And also, we've assisted in writing the energy section of the updated Brattleboro Town Plan. So, what I'd like you to take away from this is that the municipality and the community have had some solid success over the past decade in reducing energy use and carbon emissions and reducing our dependence on fossil fuels. And we can and should do more, and we have a solid base to build on, to do more and take it to the next level. Thank you.
So, I don't know if anybody else on the Energy Committee would like to comment, and I'll thank them all. I'd like to comment on some of the work we've had extensive discussions with the Energy Committee, the Planning Commission has, and really worked through some real solid elements in the town plan, so. Next, James, would you read that letter, please?
So, my name is James Valenti. I'm a member of the Planning Commission with Gary. One of our members is named Jim Verzino. A lot of you probably know him, and he's very dedicated to this issue. He couldn't be here tonight, so he asked that I read a letter on his behalf, expressing him for you to hear. So, this is Jim Verzino, and just pretend I'm him. I'll do my best. Dear friends and community members, I'm very sorry that I cannot be there this evening. I am at a conference called Camp Snowball. Camp Snowball brings together leaders in education, in systems thinking, and sustainability in schools and communities. For those that don't know me, I am a trainer and consultant to companies in sustainability and ethics. I spend many hours exploring sustainability and eco-efficiency to corporate executives and managers. Sometimes, this is a real uphill battle. In one of my sessions, a sixth grader, as part of a question, explained the tragedy of the commons. If you don't know what I'm talking about, I'm sure Ralph Maima will be happy to explain it to you. I thought to myself, "I spent hours trying to explain sustainability to business people. Wouldn't my mission be more quickly met if middle-school children started coming home and asking their parents, 'Mom, what is your company doing to maintain the commons?'" This was a big moment for me in realizing moving sustainability forward means hitting it in all aspects of schools, business, government, and, oh, he said business twice, but simultaneously. We are all after our part of the system. I'm sorry. We are all, after all, part of the system, and our town is a subset of a bigger system in the region, state, country, and world. We know that technology is there to create a sustainable future. It is our social systems and mental models that are hindering progress. On that note, I want to finish with this thought. In Tucson, they start teaching systems thinking in kindergarten. We all know that learning happens in the classroom, but the playground is a good model of life after school. Although they didn't use the exact words, these first graders had a shared vision of being harmonious friends, yet they were fighting on the playground. Watch them apply systems thinking to get to their harmonious future. And Jim supplied a link to a YouTube video, and it is a little bit complex, so follow along closely. If you'd like to see the video he references, it's http://youtube/owtub slash o w slash O-W-F, D as in dog, I, V as in victor, Y-K-7-G-L. Everybody got it? I have this if anybody wants to see it later, and thanks for listening.
So I guess that, in particular, we didn't really rehearse this, but I don't know if any of the members of different commissions or boards would like to comment on some of their work that they've been doing that particularly would talk about sustainability. And I don't know if, Rod, was there anybody that was going to say something in particular?
No, no, it's just an opportunity for anyone out there who's currently sitting on the board committee to relay whether that group has discussed sustainability issues and made some kind of decisions about that or confronted it in some other way.
You know, people may, may, or may not know this, but we probably have 10 different boards and commissions represented here tonight. The Conservation Commission, who's, who's on the Conservation Commission here? Drew, any comments, or Peter?
Well, one of the main objectives for this year for the Conservation Commission is to continue work on the trail system in Brattleboro. We're working and looking at various public and private trails throughout the community. I think our long-term goal is to try and connect some of these trails, make them transportation routes possibly. We're, we're right now in the inventory stage. We, just these past two Tuesdays have gone out and hiked trails that most of the commissioners have never been on. And some of these go to town lines, and we're looking at connections to other towns. But I, I think at some point in time, we'll be looking at a map, at least on, on the town website, that has these connections. And that's pretty much a continuation of last year, but we're emphasizing that this year now.
Anything about the energy that you guys have talked about?
Well, we've been working with the town on the conservation chapter of the natural resources chapter. And there are available maps that we've been working on. Most of them have been maps such as identification of prime farmland, areas of threatened endangered species, areas, large areas of contiguous woodland that are suitable for large animal habitats. A lot of these are inventories that have already existed through state, state inventories. They will be part, and we've, we've established town maps that hopefully will be part of the town plan and show issues like wetlands and, and areas that are steep and slopes, things that may be difficult to develop, areas that shouldn't be developed, things like that. So these are natural resource inventories that we've been working on, and I think most of them will end up somewhere in town, in the appendix of the town plan.
People may not know, but there are several maps that are required for the town plan. I think there's been some of those, but it was. Thanks, Drew. Peter and Gary, yeah?
Well, we might, yes, we've, we've mapped land in conservation, land suitable for conservation. I think that's an addition. We've looked at the town in, in terms of already conserved land, which is probably geographically the, the most substantial sector, land committed, under development or committed to development. And then the, and then the region in terms of land use in between, and given some thought to what directions they, they may, may want to take.
Thanks. How about the Arts Committee? How many people are here from the Arts Committee? Anybody? How about, well, how many people are here at the Arts Committee that would like to see? Great. Who else should I call?
Just anybody who's from a different, I mean, I guess, I'm interested to hear, and I guess other people are too, that's a little bit outside the normal, the normal core groups that have been dealing with it.
Agriculture? Do you have anybody here from agriculture?
Right.
Would you feel like to say what your folks have been doing?
Well, the agriculture committee has been in existence for about 25 years. And at times, it's been activated when there's been certain issues that have come forward to the town that has involved agricultural land. There's a revolving loan fund for agricultural land that the town established back in 1985, and that fund has grown. So any farmer, farmer, farm enterprise can apply for a low-interest loan through the town for farmland protection. We've, we've kind of expanded that to include possibly infrastructure improvement. The only active thing we've been doing recently has been a land use map, and this is specifically an agricultural land use map. So it, it identifies all open land parcels in the town of Brattleboro and shows what the current use is in terms of whether it's open for, it's, what its land use is. For example, it could be crop land, it could be hayland, it could be pasture land, and, and also who owns or who rents that piece of land. So that's something that we've been working on, and it's, it's constantly dynamic, so we're, we're adding to it, subtracting from it, changing landowners. But that does exist, and it's in a draft form right now.
Yes, Drew. How about the Solid Waste Committee?
I'm Nancy Barber. I am co-chair of the Solid Waste Committee along with Peter Cooper, who couldn't be here tonight. We are working closely with the new recycling coordinators, Mosk Taylor and Cindy Sterling, who are really doing a nice job in helping us educate the town about recycling. We are working with about 60 some odd households who will not recycle, who keep making the same old mistakes despite efforts to help them, correct them. We're also working on a program to add recycling containers downtown. This is very new. People seem to want it. And we're happy to oblige, but of course, we don't have any money. So we're looking into retrofitting some of the existing containers that, that are present downtown, those nice-looking, heavy cast iron things, with space in them for cans and bottles and, and paper. However, we would need a third, what's the, the third thing? Cans, bottles?
Trash.
Trash, oh, trash. We need to have containers for trash and cans and bottles and paper downtown, and we're trying to look for a way to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just want to add that. I'm James Houghley. I'm on the Solid Waste Committee. I would just want to add that we're also looking at ways to expand the project cow dumpster that's up at the Solid Waste District and see if we can't get one or two in, in town here for local use. And there is hope that the, our curbside contractor, Triple T, will also begin curbside collection of, of the project cow material.
Who else? Anybody else? Who else is on a commission or a committee or a board who would like to put in their two cents or less spoon?
I'm Stuart Nagabe. I'm on the Development Review Board, and the town finance committee, I hope the town finance committee is going to have a chance this year to look very, very hard at our long-range needs in this town, to start thinking in terms of 20 and 30 and 40 years, and how we are going to repair, replace, maintain the infrastructure that we have, or begin thinking about, actually, we won't be doing thinking about it, but to give people an honest appraisal about how to think about, what to think about, how our, our infrastructure in the future. Can we afford to maintain the water system and the schools and everything else we have? The other hat that I wear, the Development Review Board, I've been associated with on and off for I don't know how long now, six, seven, or eight years, happy to say that the direction it's gone, for the most part, has been to enforce the zoning regulations, which is how the town plan is implemented, as much as we could in the spirit of that we feel they were written in terms of pushing developers and development towards human scales and human utilizations and landscaping and all of the, all of the things we'd like to have that we hear about in the town plan. All that said, I'd like to make one last comment. What the zoning, what the Development Review Board really needs is a much wider, broader, up-to-date set of zoning regulations to come out of the Planning Commission. If I can exhort, you have nine people and a lot more that would help you. We need, after this town plan is done, we need to see a torrent of proposals for new, new zoning regulations that will begin to implement as quickly as possible all of the goals and objectives that you'll have in the town plan.
Thanks, Drew. And by the way, that is, we're actually planning at least a torrent of goals and, and actions in the town plan having to do with newly implemented zoning, so newly written zoning, I should say. So we're going to move on to the next part of this. Anybody who's on a commission, a board, a committee, who would like to put something down when we do the forest station exercise in two, two times from now, that'll be a good time to put something down that you haven't stated or that you just remembered. So introduce Rod Francis, planning director.
Hello. Thank you for coming, everybody. Welcome again. I just wanted to take a brief moment, I'm going to kind of collapse this down, we're running about seven minutes over schedule here, so I really am eager to get as much out of the room as we possibly can manage here. This is a great turnout, and I want to make the most of that. So I'm going to squeeze down what I'm going to talk about here. If you look at the two black boards that are blocking the light, they're the back windows, what you'll see spelt out is a couple of different things. And it sort of summarizes where we've been with the town plan as a process, and it also includes a calendar for production. We're a little off that, but pretty much we're, we're moving along. What I need to explain very quickly to many of the people in the room who have not been involved with the town plan process to date is that we have a framework for producing the town plan, given to us by state statute. Not every town in, or municipality in Vermont has to have a town plan. You, as a community, choose to have a plan. Brattleboro has had a plan in place or in effect for a very long period of time. Once you get a plan in place, it's actually pretty difficult to un-get a plan. It's fairly difficult to delete it. So the chapter 20, chapter 117 of 24 VSA is where you would find reference to the framework of a town plan. There's two different sections that deal with it. Effectively, we have what the state legislators call 10 goals and, so 13 goals and 10 elements to react to as we develop both a process for producing the town plan and the final document. The key thing to note here is that the historical origins of a municipal plan, sometimes in different jurisdictions, it's referred to as a master plan, is that it is the statement of the vision and priorities of the community in question, and it actually has legal standing in a very specific context with reference to land development. And so the, the historic origins and the core of the town plan, and the, the core of the Brattleboro Town Plan in versions past, and certainly in this one, is that we have a, defined by statute, legal requirement to meet certain expectations and to, and to provide certain kinds of information, that is guidance to all existing property owners, real property owners, land owners, and any potential property owner, or any potential developer of, of the property that is contained within the town boundaries. And so without boring you with the details, what the, the part I want to emphasize here is that a large part of the town plan, even as we address it through this context and through this lens of sustainability, it still has to be consistent with, and it still has to fit these legal requirements that are spelt out and that are core. In Vermont, the land use function and the land use control function of a town plan is augmented with some broader goals to do with community, community development, even reaching out as far as public health. They are added to over time, and they're added to by the legislature in response to changing professional judgments about what's appropriate for a plan to address, and changing community perceptions or expectations of what a plan should address. If you take the goals and elements together and read it as one document in statute, you could see a thread winding through many of those that speak to the kinds of issues that Ralph spoke to when it comes to sustainability. So in the Vermont context, protecting small towns and villages, protecting open space, protecting the working landscape or agriculture, all these things are goals and elements that the town plan is required to respond to. So in many ways, what we're doing when we're responding to those goals and elements is in fact building a narrative and providing supporting information that would demonstrate to the reader and anyone who is going to live under the terms of the plan, which is anybody involved in real land development, what the goals and objectives of the community are. They also, though, have to match up with longstanding case law, state statute when it comes to the rights of property owners, and a variety of other things. So they're balanced off in a very complex way, which means that very strong partisan or very sort of distinct positions developed in the plan are problematic. And so I think for many people who have got some expectations about what can be produced in the town plan in terms of the vision, might be a little disheartened or, or concerned that what seems to happen is that once things go into the town plan writing process, it comes out somewhat faded and bleached out. I think that we're aware and sensitive to those issues. What we're trying to do is to incorporate the community input as far as we can, we can effectively, but we also have to address these other, these other points before we can make an acceptable plan that's going to have legal standing, that will be meaningful as a guide to development for five years. This is the last point I want to make. Town plan exists for five years, at which point it has to be renewed. The obligation of the select board when they review the draft document from the planning commission is to think about all the interests and all the community members of Brattleboro in existence now and into the future, because any decision made today when it comes to real development or a large-scale investment actually has a life beyond the five years and therefore will affect the ability of subsequent plans. If the select board wants to direct the Planning Commission to extend the scope of the plan in some particular way, even then, it has to be read against statute, read against those requirements, understood in terms of whether it's practical or not. And then lastly, the plan, once it comes into effect, has to be able to be defended and supported in very many venues. The key ones here would be in Act 250 hearings, which are held outside the town, but would affect large-scale projects in town, and then any appeal of a land use decision made in town. And I want to point out that it's not infrequent that town plans are drawn into question and challenged as a standard practice in land use law in Vermont, as a, you know, as a matter of course, it's standard procedure. So there's a lot actually to think about as we formulate that text. So at this point, what I'm asking you to do and what I'm really excited about is the possibility that in those areas that we, that match up to the chapters, which then in turn match up to the elements and the goals that the town plan has to respond to, we've already done quite a bit of work identifying what already exists in terms of commitments or activities that could be thought of as consistent with sustainability. We can identify things that we hope to do in the next five years, and we'd like to hear from you about anything that we've left out or overlooked. And so I'm going to turn it over to Sue to very quickly go through the instructions for the forestation exercise that we're going to do. Thank you, Sue.
So we've set up four stations that Gary mentioned earlier are loosely based on different chapters of the town plan. We have community development and housing in the back of this room. We have energy over here to your left. And then in room two north, which is just at the store down the hallway, straight ahead, we've got development and conservation, which includes agriculture, and municipal operations and transportation, which also includes education and childcare and those kind of, those chapters of the town plan. And so what we'd like you to do is, we've, we've got two sheets at each station, we have current initiatives, the things that are going on within the town that we believe fit the sustainability model, and then we have, in the orange, future actions, and those are new things that we're proposing for the town plan. We're going to have sheets of paper out and pens and markers, and we'd like you to respond to them. If you see something that you would like to add to the future actions, please write it down. If somebody else wrote it down and you want to second it, you can just put a star there, we've got stickers, you can do whatever. If you, if we're missing current initiatives, which I'm sure we are, feel free to add on to that list as well. And we have a large group, you know, we'd like you to spend your time where you would like to spend it, because you might have a topic that's near and dear to you. But for the purpose of starting out, I'd like to ask these three, the front three roads to move into the other room, and then kind of, you can move around as you feel comfortable. And we're going to have a staff person stationed at each station so that they can explain or about what some of the thinking is on these.